Good evening, I want to call a special meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Wednesday, July 5 and 6:30 PM. For the purpose of regular. Please follow along.
Andrew.
Here.
Andrew.
Yeah. Here.
Also present are fiscal officers.
No one cares about this.
Chief Senator, Chief Rosenbaum, Service Representative Mike Mary, a whole lot of other people. Like to ask them what you see in time.
Legally, we're considered a lawyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, so it's like your party and then you.
You want me to do that first or all my stuff first? All right, very good. I'd like to request to hire firefighter EMT Adam Budak, Joseph Zywick at a rate of 1478, one out for in one year probation effective immediately, and also hire Aiden Ragic. Ragic, sorry, I'm sorry. Stephen Ternick at a rate of 1478 per hour for one, one year probation effective following their successful completion of their background checks and physicals. They're in the process, we're just waiting for him to the paperwork to come in. Um, but I'd like to have them sworn in, please.
One favor.
Hi.
May I move chief's labs over here?
No, no.
You want me to? So I mean, we want somewhere.
Do it up front.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do, yeah.
Ready, families?
I would if you didn't do this.
You would.
I think it's coming out of this.
I'm gonna say all of your name. They don't wanna shoot, so why don't you guys stand?
Hey, guys, like face the audience. Yep, there you go.
All right. Yes, for me. I, Andrew Budak, Joseph Zywick, Aiden Ragic, Stephen Ternick. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a volunteer fireman for Hinkley Township.
Of a volunteer fireman for Hinkley Township.
In Medina County, State of Ohio.
Medina County, State of Ohio.
During my service in the fire department.
During my service in the fire department.
All right, everybody say Hinkley on three, one, two, three. It can be better than that. There we go, there's. Okay.
All right. Very good, thank you. Welcome gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, open board. There you go.
Aiden, we'll get your name right, I promise.
Yes.
I think Mr. Quincy Axel did a great job.
Yes.
Thanks, congratulations.
Thank you guys very much, you guys are free to head on out. To home. Yeah, if you guys want to stay, you're welcome.
Should we just leave it here?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Bye, everybody.
Bye Jen, thanks for trying. Hey Jenny, let them know, let them know if anyone wants some photos of the fire station.
Chief Rosenbaum. Oh, yeah, so you know, yep.
Hi, guys.
Yeah, just email to me, yep, thank you. John, my lieutenant there can give you my email. Gray shirt that just walked out bald head.
Thank you.
Yep. Can't miss them, big, big human being. No, I have to go to work.
Yeah.
Bye. Make sure the trusty, the trustees' attention. All right, very good. I request appropriations for $1,232.50 for 49 t-shirts, 24 sweatshirts and two hooded sweatshirts for new members and stockpile for members in case of emergency from funky prints. Those four members we hired need shirts. We have a couple of members that we hired that we haven't had t-shirts and sweatshirts. Also, one of my shirts had bodily fluids on there, so we're gonna make sure we have extra shirts when people get contaminated or ripped or anything like that. Myself and Jen will track it and then next year when we do clothing allowance, they'll be able to buy out of their clothing allowance for this, but it's nice to have some on, on hand, so we can have them.
Second. Want to speak on a favor?
Hi.
Next is request appropriations for $478 through a top load washing machine from Home Depot. I know the quote has tax on it, there won't be tax when we buy it. They could not remove it until we buy it through the back where I got the quote from. Ours, that washing machine we've had, it has been here since Chief Porton, so it's been many years, so it's served well in its time. It's a, it's a basic model just to wash towels and uniforms.
Second.
Moving second in on favor.
Hi.
The next two, I think I can read simultaneously, both resignations. Request accepted resignation of firefighter paramedic Jake Bartonelli and Kimmy Gerbasi effective immediately. Jake Bartonelli took the leave, he's not coming back, he was a, has a position at Parma Heights Fire and he's got overtime, he says he wants to enjoy the summer and work all the overtime hours. And Kimmy with her new baby and she has a, her job at the pharmacy is kinda crazy with being on call and all that. So she's, a couple of shifts she picked up, she had to call up because they made her work, so that's, she's stepping down, and she did 15 years of service with the Hinkley from the volunteer, from explorers to the volunteer to staffing, so I definitely wanna thank her for her service for the year she put in.
Too bad.
Yep.
Great law store department.
Yep.
Wish her wealth for all.
Yep.
Did you second move?
I did.
Second, moving session in on favor.
Hi.
Two quick items, we got an EMS grant for $300. It's been going down every year across state. We also were in, we're in the process of figuring out how to accept the grant. We got a grant for $20,000 through Ohio Budget and Management, which is, goes to basically give pay premiums to members that work during the pandemic from the date and through one day through another day. I don't remember, so we're, we're gonna look into that. But that'll be coming up, I believe, in the next meeting, I'll ask for approval on that, but that's all I have. There's a blood drive next week instead of the old fire station. I'm sorry, the new fire station, not the old one, like it was emailed because the temperatures, they can't keep cool, so it'll be there. That's all I have. Thank you.
And now for the chief. Thank you, bugger for the chief.
Thank you, I gotta go to work. Have a good one, guys, appreciate it.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Michael.
The only thing I have tonight is the Valley Brook bed results that I'd sent you guys. Just wanted to read them aloud for everybody. This project for the engineer's estimate was $609,535. The lowest bidder came in Fabrizi Trucking and Paving Company at 549,835. Then Trymore was second at 586,585. And then Dean's Concrete at 637,95. So. Yeah, and it was nice to see that Fabrizi and Trymore both came in quite a bit under the engineer's estimate, so. We have worked with Fabrizi in the past, they did some good work up there, they did Salem for us, so I mean, they like I said, they did some pretty good work up there, can't complain, so.
Right, I have the information at the attorney for the use of the ARPA funds for that. He did get back to me and I sent him the bid tab, he's working on the resolution, but I don't have it back yet, so.
Okay.
Till we get that, that's more people to go forward on it.
He can always send it to the prosecutor's office if you want with all the paperwork. He's in prosecutor's office with the paperwork and meanwhile.
The contracts and everything.
While you're waiting.
Okay.
Resolution.
Great.
Perfect.
Thanks for sending them.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Other than that, that's pretty much all I have, I'm just glad to see the bed results come in the way they did, so that's positive.
Anybody else have anything for Mike?
Thank you.
It gave you a Pacment from Lewison Land. Confiscating the remainder of the ARPA funds to continue work on that. So that's in your package consideration. Once we get information back, right back, we can move forward with that if we choose to do so. The amount of money that was available was estimated, including the engine charges, at around 270. So that's the number that we're working with.
It's gonna be a little more. Cause right now the fund balance in that line is about 865,000.
Well, we were going off the engineer's estimate, that's why.
Yeah, but I mean, keep, keep in mind what, what the balance is on you.
Right, Mike and I talked, we can adjust it to have a additional work to it.
Okay.
To do that, so. Trying to get it all done, yeah.
Deal.
So do we wanna make a motion to at least send this to the prosecutor's office?
You don't.
Choose. Well, we should probably choose the vendor publicly instead of just.
Yeah, cause we don't have the resolution, we shouldn't use that.
Okay, so we can.
Right.
If there's no harm, no fine, you have the prosecutor's office looking at any contract. You have it committed to it.
Spotted a cavity on these numbers, it's interesting.
Anyone in public have anything for a service?
Thanks, guys.
Steve, Mike.
Will be there.
Good evening. I have nothing on my agenda. The only thing I would like to discuss is 25 River Road. We have been able to make contact with a couple of family members of this gentleman. I know that no one's been able to speak with him directly. I would ask that we kinda put the brakes on this for right now as far as resolutions or any further movement by the township until we have a chance to try to work with the family and reach a resolution on this.
In the spirit of been working with this gentleman, we've been working with his family to their documentation in our.
I would, well, we spoke to the son and the ex-wife today and nobody mentioned having any contact with Hinkley Township. So. Then I'll, I'll look into that, but for right now, given the circumstances there, would ask that we just put a hold on it for the time being and see what we can accomplish.
I'm a real.
According to the sun, this has been going on for decades, back and forth with the township, I don't know how much fact there is to that. But if there's any part of that is actually true, delaying this for a little bit of time to see if we can work this out is not gonna harm anything.
The file, I mean, I went back today and looked at it, the first complaint that I can see in the file goes back to 1986. So, yeah, it's been a long time, this is the file right here for the public, it's not a tiny file. I just wish I knew a little bit more information because we've done that, we've actually approached him, I knocked on his door personally with the intent of us, we sent letters or typed mail saying that we wanted to help him as a community instead of take this route. And did not have any response from him nor family. That was obviously the ideal way to go.
I understand that. Based on the information and our conversations with the son and the ex-wife today, there are extenuating circumstances that I am not gonna discuss here. If you wish to call me tomorrow, I will fill you in on some of that happily. But again, I think it's in everyone's best interest just to allow this to kinda slow down a little bit and see what we can work out. If it's been going on since 1986, I don't think there's any urgency today.
I don't disagree and I certainly don't want anyone's private life publicly mentioned, so I have no problem with that. Thank you for your work on it.
You're welcome.
I'll give you a call phone.
Please do.
Thanks, you.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Anybody else have a question? Good evening.
You too, thank you. You're welcome.
Welcome back.
Thank you, it's good to be back.
There isn't anything else for zoning, do you wanna go to the minutes, I think we kinda skipped through.
I, so I made the changes or change of punctuation on the concern that was raised June 6th meeting. So there being nothing else. Now it reads. Present we're trustees Swadek Augustine and Asher, fiscal officer Cathwood, and assistant fire chief, chief Sean Barrett, fire chief, police chief, and service department superintendent Ted Excuse Asses.
Moving up for the minutes for the June 6th, 2023 regular trustee meeting. Second by actual discussion. One favor.
Hi.
I will move to approve the minutes for the June 20, 2023 regular trustee meeting.
I have a couple of changes for that one. In the first paragraph, it says three people attended in person, and then there's just a blank and it says virtual, are we going to build that in or just?
We don't have any information.
So can we just say three people attended in person and a virtual audience was in attendance as well or something to that nature, just cause.
Why is it three people attended in person period?
That's fine, yeah, whatever you wanna do it.
To, 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 to that point, since you can't participate virtually any longer, they can only watch, I would say just leave that off in the future.
It's fine, I think, you know. See then and use it and communicate on how many virtual people, but if it's not necessary, then I think that's a, just the late Judy on the minutes.
Well, plus, I mean, you could log on multiple devices and it's one person, you don't really know where the computer's at.
I have no problem with not counting them, except that they're attendees, but to your point, who knows how many attendees there are, multiple.
Anything else on that one?
I do have a couple more changes. On page two, under zoning, second paragraph, it says, Ms. Augustine verified that in response to questions from the public regarding the trustees' involvement in discussions with the new property owner and town center, the trustees do not have a role in zoning and I, I said the trustees do not approve or deny businesses or developments being built. So I'd like to reflect that.
Send me the language, okay, and you guys approve it so I can follow it to change.
And then under trustees, same page, last paragraph, Ms. Augustine requested another letter be sent giving additional time to property owners who originally did not respond to the letter. Just what I would like to see there, what it says right now, who were originally considered to be unknown was what was written. But those were no responses. So I'd like to see that reflected. A no response. And you and I know that, I appreciate that, but I think for the purpose of keeping the record, they were no responses. And then on page three, the word which, it says Ms. Augustine requests that the following be considered at the next meeting. It says which Hinkley Township properties, can we just get rid of which? Because it would be all Hinkley Township properties. Says which Hinkley Township properties are a yes response or do not count at all? We say if Hinkley Township properties are a yes response or do not count at all, instead of which?
Well, I don't know, I wasn't here, so you can, you can figure it out.
Do you see it?
Yeah.
Perfect, I will send them the language, that's all I have.
The move to approve is amended?
Second.
Second, I'll ask you to stand on a favor.
I will, yes, Dave.
Move to approve minutes for the June 27, 2023 special trustee meeting.
Second.
Second by Augustine, discussion. Melissa?
No, no.
All in favor?
Hi.
Cemetery?
Yes, sir. Okay, um, just really quick, I'm gonna kind of move it around a little bit, there was notification given to us from Hinkley Oaks, which is the new senior housing development, that they will be putting a small memorial for former trustee Schulte in, I believe, their community room, so I just wanted to make that announcement. The water survey results were the results that I passed out at the last meeting, I have a copy here from the actual. It's my third grade coloring, it's not anything pretty. Some of the questions that came up during that conversation on the June 20th meeting was if the township properties would be considered a yes vote or a no response at all to not be included. By them being a no response, they were a no, so it counted against the, the results. And so I just wanted to see what the trustees wanted to do, I'm under the impression that in the past the township has held the favor that they would be a yes vote for water infrastructure. I don't know, I haven't seen it myself in minutes, not from an effort of trying, but just confined it.
That was back when we had the hundred dollar commitment fee. And so that's how those properties were considered. If you, on Jeremy's map, or that, it was Jeremy at the time. But if on that map, they had sent in their deposit, then, then obviously they were a yes. But now that doesn't occur anymore, and from what I understand, the county has set back some of those deposits, so I don't know that you can use that as an assessment, I guess that's what I'm saying, because that system is no longer in place.
Understood.
So then, and.
So in the past, had the township put a hundred dollars down for their properties that they considered?
You know, that, that, that was before me, that would be a question for Colleen. Or. Yeah, you know, really, I heard. That I can't say, but we were, we were, we were considered an entity to put a deposit, and it was on this building and the historical society. Those were the only two, the fire station does not have any deposits on it, it didn't exist at that time, so it was these two properties.
Yeah, because if you look at the map and trustee Ashwell, those are the brown properties, it includes the Maple Hill Cemetery, so those are all township properties along this stretch of road that we're seeing on this map.
I think something to consider that wasn't in place back then is the fact that you weren't talking about an assessed project. You were talking about awaited response of participation, which we never did reach anything in excess of 32, 33%. And so the township would have to reconsider that because if you're looking at three or four township properties all assessed, whatever the tens of thousands would be, that would have to be a financial consideration as to what properties would be inclusive of that.
Right. So what are the thoughts of the board as it relates to those township properties?
I, I would say that there enough, that's, this is an assessed project, so this would be putting assets.
That was one of my initial questions, when, when did we agree on an assessment? When we first were sending out the letter?
What did you do?
Agree on an assessment?
That was the only way the project kind of would do the project.
Would be as an assessed project.
Okay, so, but we, we didn't have a conversation about the township properties. So we didn't have an agreement moving forward with that letter for the properties that we are stewards of.
Well, if we responded affirmatively and somehow got above this magical number that they needed to be, that would be using taxpayers' salaries to do the water. So I would say township property department, because this is only moving forward, the county has said as an assessed project if there was an overwhelming response rate, so I would say no.
Okay, just to sort it, do you have the same opinion?
Me do.
Okay. So we had also a conversation at the last meeting about potentially mailing the letters to the no responses. I had said publicly that I had spoken to a business owner who didn't, just didn't get it to him in, in his mail in time. Knew he wasn't gonna make the cutoff, I spoke with a brand new honeymoon couple that worked on their honeymoon, so they weren't able to make deadline, and then I actually had a resident approach me about Our Lady of Grace Church who said that they wanted to make a decision and send in the letter, but they were waiting for option A, B, and C to be on the website and they didn't see it, so they never sent him the letter because they didn't see that information that was noted in the letter. So I just wanted to see if that was something that this board would like to pursue.
Sure, it was, all three options were on the website, I actually went there a couple different times and saw them on the website. In response to, I think Tom, you had asked the question at the last meeting about when were the letters sent? They were sent on April 28th and the responses were due on May 12th, so we did have more than two weeks to get the responses. And for the people who did not get them or did not think that they could get them in time or they would miss the deadline, I would say they have every single right to fill out the form with the county. This was just to see, is there enough interest for the county to move forward to, to revisit this as an assessed project? So they can go to the county directly. I would not be in favor of sending out another letter for a couple different reasons. Number one, we actually just got an email, I don't know if either one of you have seen it, we just got an email before the meeting from a resident who said she actually did not get the comprehensive plan audit survey. And we had a couple of people like that that did not get them. And we agreed as a board, we were not going to be sending those out again to the people who did not get them. So I would say anybody can send this into the county, but no, to go and redo these letters again, I think I don't really understand why you want to do it. You were quoted saying multiple times all the inaccuracies in the letter. You mentioned several times that you were the only trustee against sending out this letter. You did not want to waste taxpayers' money by sending out the letter and that this letter was sent out just to check a box. And now we got the results and now you want to send it out a second time. And now we got the results, and now you want to send it out a second time. I just, honestly, I don't understand the, the logic and the thought process.
So with a comprehensive plan audit responses, I was the only trustee who asked the question, should we give them a little bit more time? I'm doing the same thing now, it's called due diligence, and so that's what I do. I always ask the question, it doesn't mean I'm in favor or against, it means I'm just doing the best I can to offer these people another opportunity, because they have said to me they didn't get the, the opportunity that they wish they had.
And I understand you're always gonna have that aspect of it.
Absolutely.
My opinion is, we sent this out, we did what we said we were gonna do, we got results back that do not support moving forward on this. And I have been adamant that I will not support any tax project. So if they don't want to move forward as an assessed project, I think that's the end of the road here.
Okay, because I think option B is almost met, and when I spoke with, emailed Jeremy over at the county, he said we just need fifty percent.
That's, that's for him to even take it to the commissioners, that doesn't mean the commissioners
That's correct.
are gonna approve it, they're gonna look at it and say, look, look at what, what is needs based.
So can, is this board in agreement to send it to the commissioners and just show them what our results are?
I am, we sent this out.
Okay. Trustee Ashley, you feel the same way?
Yeah, I think we did what we said we were going to do.
Which is exactly why I said it's just checking a box, and I said there were any accuracies in the letter.
Well, you can keep driving the project until you get the results you want, I don't think that that's what we should do.
I'm doing my due diligence.
Well, if everyone's in agreement, let's, well, let's, let's talk about the due diligence. Because let's talk about the inaccuracies that you continually point out in the letter. These were the numbers that were given to us directly by Jeremy Tango. Those numbers were, he had no reason to translate those numbers, that's, this is his job, this is what he does. So you were saying he was inaccurate with this. Then you said that the developer, who's coming into the center of town, has found a way to run it for a fraction of the cost. And what I kept asking over and over and over again is, what are we looking at? Are we looking at, are we comparing apples to apples? Because you were doing your due diligence, and you kept saying how inaccurate this was, that the developers found a way to run the water for, what, two million dollars?
I didn't give a praise.
Do you know?
I didn't give a praise.
Do you know that the very next day, after that last meeting, it was actually uncanny? Because I asked his attorney what we were looking at, apples to apples, and he didn't know. But the very next day, Bethany Denler reached out to me at the request of Sean Daphne to let me know, oh, we're not going to extend the water beyond Ridge Road on three oh three. So it's not a conflict of interest to you. So we're actually, it's now confirmed, we're not comparing apples to apples. We're talking about a much shorter run, so of course it's going to be less money. So while doing your due diligence, I was doing some due diligence on my own, and we're not comparing apples to apples. So I agree with Jack, I think that the water conversation is done. We sent out the letters, we sent out the letters to anyone who would be impacted by this, and said, would you be interested in proceeding with this as an assessed project? And it came back at twenty-seven percent for the only ones.
We didn't, we didn't break down A, B, and C, the, the three options.
It was broken down on the website.
If I looked at the percentage for each option, I think we're darn close to, to meeting the fifty percent in option B, as I said earlier. Now, as it pertains to the map, the water infrastructure, I know for certain, in option B, never went to actual studios. And, and I know that because in talking to Jeremy, he said it would just run right underneath the road both ways for the potential hookup in the future. So it never was meant to go deeper than that. And, and I appreciate you doing your due diligence, and I do believe there were inaccuracies in the letter, one of which was what I just stated. We, we didn't have a conversation about an assessment as a, as a board, as it pertained to our own properties. There were a lot of things that, that I felt we should wait on, I, I said it publicly before, and I'll say it again. Mr. Daphne sent all three of us an email and asked us just to hold off, so he could secure his numbers for water infrastructure as a comparable. And that was what I wanted to see, and his numbers came in very, very differently. And so I don't know which side is inaccurate, but there's an accuracy. And I appreciate you both looking into it and exploring the option. I have one more thing that is not on my agenda, there was a quote in the Hinkley record with regard to a trustee's quote saying that we were going to be looking into a police levy. And I don't remember having a conversation about that.
That was my quote, and that is directly from Chief Senator, we will need to have a police levy within the next two years.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And you never had a conversation with Chief Senator about this, you were the police liaison until about a month, a year ago? You didn't know anything about?
We, we spoke about a police levy very briefly, but we never had conversations saying that that was gonna be unnecessary.
We've been talking about that for a while.
Right.
Because of the remember, we talked about relaxing or getting rid of the oldest levy?
We talked about, well, that was before the fire department levy, so we were talking about maybe doing a safety forces levy.
No, I never, well, that was.
We had a lot of conversation.
That was the one, that we, yeah, we discussed that one.
Yeah, that was not.
And then we decided not to do that.
Not an option.
So we talked, we talked at length about the police going through that reserve.
Yes.
And that is going to be exhausted, and there's no way around that.
And that is, and then. Discussing a levy for the police department, that's what I was asking.
Then that has been going on for over ten years, to be honest, before.
I, I hear. Uh, well. I think we always talk about levies, but I'm just asking, the question is, when do we publicly discuss a, a police levy?
We discuss a police levy because we've done it when we do the budget, for, I don't know that we discussed it last year. In prior years, when I present the budget, which I will do tonight, in my notes, say, you know, one of the proposals to do is, right now we have four, five, or five, I don't know, four, I'm gonna say four permanent police levies. And the oldest, I think it's from nineteen eighty-three, it's a two mil levy, it doesn't bring in much money. And a lot of the things we talked about, that I can pull up my old notes going back years ago as fiscal officer, is that my recommendation would be to terminate the oldest levy and put on a new levy. And we've talked about that, I mean, I have documented, I have paper, we talked about that, that's been my recommendation for years.
We talked about that in the joint last year.
Yeah, so, um.
I just don't recall publicly discussing it.
Maybe we, you didn't discuss it, but you listened while I said it, so maybe that's the man that's.
It's, it's not, it's not.
I think we're done with this conversation.
I, I think it's being taken in a, a different way that it should probably.
Let's move on.
I'm already moved on.
Thank you, okay.
I would like to remind everyone that Kimball will be delayed by one day, so Kimball will be picking up on Saturday, not Friday, this week because of the holiday, and Lynn has asked me to remind everyone to pay your bill before August, because we will be pulling those allowances at the end of August for the auditors for the assessments. Twenty-five River Road follow-up was on my list, but Chief Senator of Carabao. Then I wanted to discuss with you both, you have copies that I put in front of you, Martha, you have one as well. We had discussed, I'm not sure if you remember or not, a couple of months ago, sending out a Kimball with the annual opt-out, sending out, here's another version of it also. Sending out a survey with the opt-out letter to see how the residents want to proceed with the single hauler. So I did kind of a rough draft of this, had some conversation with Martha about it also, which Martha kind of had a different idea, so I wanted to discuss them both with you both. And that is sending out a letter, like the draft that you have in front of you, just check a box, yes, I want to remain single hauler, or no, I would like to go back to choosing my own single hauler, or my own hauler. And we can do it that way, where they send their letter back to us, or they email the letter to us, letting us know their wishes. That way we can technically check a box and say we did put it out to the community, what is it that you want to do? Or Martha's idea was, maybe this is something that we may wait until next year and do not necessarily a survey monkey, but along the lines of a survey monkey, where you're not asking just that one question, you want to remain single hauler, or do you want to go back to choosing your own? But if you're getting the answers to the questions that we really want to know, are you happy with the providers that we're using, are you happy with Kimball, or would you like to see someone else? Is, are you happy with a five-year contract, or would you like to see a three-year contract? And asking more detailed questions like that, that we can kind of dig into next year. So the question is, are you more comfortable sending out this letter with the opt-out, with just the yes or no, or holding off on it? I do think, I do think that an overwhelming majority of the township wishes to remain single hauler. I think that there are benefits to having a single hauler, it keeps the rates down. In this drafted letter I have, we've had zero interruption in recycling over the last three years with the labor shortages, unlike a lot of other people that use Kimball, they went four or five months with no recycling picked up. The contract allowed that to continue to happen for Hinkley. The increases, the increases have been capped because we have a single hauler contract, and the cost to replace the cans have remained the same over the last four years because we have the contract. Now, there's also been drawbacks to the contract. The drawbacks are that five percent opt-out number, that's just, it's not a realistic number for our township. We need to have something higher than that, that people are not paying to use the service that they do not need. It's also been, my opinion is, a five-year contract is too long. It's created a lot of customer service issues with Kimball that I continue to work on with Lynn, and I know you know, anybody who's been looking out to call Kimball customer service out there in the audience. Some of you have wonderful experiences, and some of you have not had the best experiences, so there are drawbacks to having a single hauler also. So open for discussion.
I would rather do something as opposed to a letter where we garner additional information and maybe electronically in some manner, collect that information, and we got, we have a, an amount of time until we start looking at replacing, if we really were going to replace the service. And it'd be great to get some feedback on, you know, any other issues that folks might be interested in, that we can take to the table.
Um, is the intent to send this with the opt-out information? Yeah, I honestly, you know, we've gone back and forth about this a lot, I know that the twenty eighteen board of trustees had a lot of scrutiny for having a survey monkey, kind of at the last minute, and then there were those records requests of IP addresses, and you know, was trying to determine if somebody voted twice, or, you know, people even from in Hinkley were voting. It gets a little messy with, with an electronic version, I see absolutely the convenience of it, but I think that if we were to do a letter, we are ensuring that every single person in Hinkley is getting one and gets the same opportunity. So I would prefer the letter, and I think that you've done a great job here in looking at both versions. The only thing that I would add, if the board is in agreement, is in the paragraph where we're talking about the drawbacks, I would mention that we also have had to have additional township staffing to implement this contract. This is, and trustee Ashley, you know, because you're dealing with it firsthand, it is, it's not an easy task upon our staff or the trustees. So I would definitely mention that.
The reason I suggested a more detailed questionnaire, and I don't, I don't care what format, but when you send out a yes or no question, you're gonna get what's considered survey bias. And a motivated person that is either for or against will check that box. And you see it with the water survey that just went out, if people are happy with what they have, they're just not gonna respond. And so I don't know what kind of valid data you can get from something like this. I think you could get two hundred responses, and you could get a hundred and forty yeses, I don't want single hauler. And what does that mean? It means that there were a hundred and forty motivated people out of twenty-six hundred township households who wanted to send it in.
Well, when you're looking to, I mean, you, you, twenty-six hundred households, what's the percentage of complaints that we've had that are at such a level that they don't want it, it's not gonna be high enough to overturn it.
And I don't care how anything's done, but I just know what I've observed is sometimes when we do these things, we create a whole lot of work for you guys, for the staff, we create a lot of public records back and forth, especially when we're, you know, asking people to respond by email to this questionnaire, and I'm just wondering, is there a better way to do this that will actually give you the information you're looking for? That, that was my, that was my point, because you are going to get a motivated sector of the township who is going to respond. But is that valid? Is that enough to base a decision on, like this?
Yeah, it's gonna be the people who are gonna complain.
And they have electronically too, right?
Any, anyway, any means, any, any means.
I just, it's a great way to reach out to the residents and see what they think, I, I think it's a great idea, that's just my opinion.
This is a great way to reach out.
Yeah, it is, but not everybody can make it.
Comments from the Peta Gallery?
Can we do both, maybe hybrid, right?
Yeah.
All the questions, sorry.
Name, social security number?
Tom Schrader, double oh one. So first of all, if you're gonna take a survey for anything, you have to understand what you're gonna do with that data, right? Is it actionable? Are you going to use that to make a decision? If you're not gonna use the data to make a decision, why ask? It's just collection of data, right?
That's my point.
Yeah. But if you are, then, you know, there's really no reason not to come up with five to seven questions, right? There's a ton of data that shows surveys more than seven questions people don't answer. So seven questions that they have to, instead of doing it online, they still have to mail it in, right? I mean, we mail it out, they send it back, right? Then there's, you know, the whole thing is it's statistically significant, the responses, and to your point, Jack, there's gonna be people that are gonna be, you know, chomping at the bit to send in their results, regardless of what their position is. So I, I'm just cautioning, saying, hey, I, I don't know that sending out a survey, I think when we mailed out last community-wide survey, it was two thousand bucks or something, maybe more. Are we gonna get any good data from it, is my point, should we spend the two thousand bucks to go, well, this was worthless, right?
That's the thing, we're just spending the money on an opt-out letter, the package that goes out to every house anyway, so it's just an insert or one more piece of paper.
And it's a bunch of data that we may not really do anything with, so just my cautionary tale, thanks.
Thank you.
Richard Pearl King Road, do the trustees have any data on what percent of the trash picked up was recyclable? And what percent Kimball actually recycled? Would that be useful information?
I get tonnage reports from Kimball.
Oh, the amount that they recycle.
Yeah, of the different materials. The tons of the different materials.
But even if you have that, Richard, it doesn't show what happens down the line. I mean, I've been to the processing centers out to the east here, and there's bales and bales of material, and it's all graded, and it's some, it never goes anywhere except the dump, so.
Have you been to the McDonald's?
Yes.
You've seen it, it's very hard to measure, it's very hard to measure what is coming in from what specific entity.
Let me talk about using someone who will help us recycle, do they actually recycle? Let me talk about using someone who will help us recycle. Do they actually recycle? Well, that, that's the point I'm making is even if they do, there's no guarantee that it gets recycled.
Right.
They can, they can do their part in it, but what happens down the line, you don't know.
So will this board use the data to measure, uh, and to make a determination on a yes or a no for future garbage contracts?
I don't know, not, I have to think about it now because I see both sides to it. That's why I wanted to send out this letter. I do agree with Martha's point as well, that you're going to get. I think that. An overwhelming majority is happy with a single hauler. Um, but. Martha's point, they might not respond to it, and you might just get the people who are really upset.
Right.
About it that, you know, and then. I would feel compelled to use the responses that we get from that. I would feel compelled to do it. And that could be going completely against what the overwhelming majority of the township actually wants to do. And that's why I would. I, I would like to give it more thought if you're both. Okay with that.
You know, it's the silent majority.
People aren't, their concerns shouldn't be addressed. But what, what, what is your purpose in doing this? Like, to Tom's point, what is it that you're going to do with this information? And, and so it's.
Well, I'm conscious that it's the silent majority. It is the silent majority, and I also think that. An overwhelming amount of people who are unhappy with the single hauler are the ones that don't get the opt-out. They want to opt-out, so that could be simply by, you know, renegotiating terms. When it's time to do a new one, you could, you could end up making 75% of the unhappy people very, very happy. So I would like to think about it some more, if you're both comfortable with that.
I do.
I would love to have.
Um, I just have one thing before we.
Oh, we skipped her. We skipped her.
She is not going anywhere tonight.
Yeah, a lot of the. I'm sitting here quietly.
Vicenteno County Committee reached out to me, and then they've got a lot of great plans going on. One of the things that they want to do is rebuild the clock at the historical building. And it sounds like they are not looking to replace the message board, which I don't blame them. It's okay. Um, so as they move forward, I'd just like to, uh, put it in your head, maybe we can use some of that extra money we come up with. To, uh, look at electronic message board, to go out in this corner out here. But have it something like, like paperweight, like a Kindle almost, so it doesn't look electronic. But you'd be able to change it from insights that are going out there and snow.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, are you talking about like our wish list items?
Yes. Good. That's all I have. Okay, Martha.
Um, I emailed, um, you all and the department heads, uh. 2024 budget. Um, again, I. Remember from years past, this is the best guess on where we're at, primarily used to. Give the county budget commission some figures to work with in order to provide us with our first certificate of estimated resources in September. Um, it does not take into account the actual carryovers that will be. Um, able to be added to our revenue after the end of the, this year. So, um. If anybody has any questions, I also provided you each with a, um, a note section that goes. Through all the different funds, um. It, uh. You know, of note is that the, the general fund is, is supporting increased salaries and road maintenance funding. Likely be reduced in future years, but I think I can pull monies out of permissive, which is 2231. That's been a good, uh, revenue line for us with the license taxes. And so I, I think we can offset some of the deductions in the general fund. But the general fund is really supporting a lot right now. Um. Anything else is pretty much the same, except again, the reference to the police department, that the carryovers will likely. Be reduced and will continue to be reduced significantly. We don't have a, a good read on that because we are into 10 months of. A, a contract that should have been, you know, agreed upon in October of 2022. So, um, there's too many variables as far as increases, retro, other, other requests by the. That maybe negotiated on that to begin to, to know where we're going to be at with that fund. Um, the fire levy is obviously, well, it's going to be a little low because of that tank for purchase, but. It'll feed itself up pretty quick again. Any questions?
Oh, thanks for providing that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so that's the, that's the first resolution on, uh, this I gave you guys.
Let me read it on. Resolution 05, correction. Resolution number 070523-01, approving the Hinkley Township to 2024 estimated budget. Second by Asher, well, call please.
Swain?
Yes.
Asher, yes. Obviously, yes. And the, the second and the third, I received a phone call today from Mike Troy, and he's our, um, health insurance broker. And he had some really good news for us, which is unusual, because usually he is the bearer of bad news. And so, um. Just, just for comparison, our usual annual premium increases range from 28 to 30%. And he, uh, he negotiates them down to us into the, the teens. Um, but he was really happy. He said that Medical Mutual contacted him. That they want to offer us an opportunity to renew for two years. And, um, the first year renewal increase would be 9.5, and there would be no increase the second year. So that's a 9.5 health insurance, uh, premium increase over two years. He also said that if we perform lower than what they project MMO, there's a chance that we could get a 5% rebate back after the two years. So the only caveat is, is that we have to let them know as soon as possible, or they're going to offer it to some other. Community or business. So that is the second resolution, and then of course, the third resolution is just adopting the overall provision of, of the health insurance.
Move to adopt resolution number 070523-02, approving, renewing the employee health and life insurances for a two-year period effective October 1, 2023. Through September 30, 2025, for all full-time employees and elected officials. Medical and life insurance is renewed through Medical Mutual of Ohio.
Second.
Second, my actual call of the role, please.
Swain?
Yes.
Asher, yes. Yes.
Move to adopt resolution number 070523-03, which provides healthcare, life, vision, and dental benefits to full-time Hinkley Township Police Department personnel. Elected officials and full-time non-union employees pursuant, pursuant to, and in accordance with terms of the current Hinkley Township. Police Department collective bargaining agreement, effective October 1, 2021, and/or ORC statute for the period of. October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024. Second, my actual call of the role, please.
Swain?
Yes.
Asher, yes, obviously, yes. Great, I will let them know. And then the bond status is currently at $6,445,018.35, of which $1,109,766.62 are in pooled investments. $5,335,941.73 are in available primary checking. And we have not received any of the second half property taxes at this point. That is not unusual, but this is reflects not having received that revenue at this point. That's it, thank you.
No, some people can't even mail in the checkbook. That's impressive. I'm moved to pay the bills in the amount of $139,703.86. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Uh, anything from the audience?
Hi, Natasha Kailis, 1809 Ridge Road. Just a couple clarifying questions. I'm just curious about the different options in the water. Melissa, did you have a breakdown of the percentages that responded yes to each of the options as far as A, B, and C? And how many do we need to get to the overwhelming majority for each of those options?
And I don't have those breakdowns per. Per option.
Okay, because you said pretty darn close for B, so you don't know what that number is?
No.
Okay.
I think the township properties were a variable, so I didn't bother to pursue it.
Okay.
That response.
Okay, so you don't know if it was very close?
Oh, it's close.
Right, but you don't have the information for that to know how close? I know, because I did receive the map that you sent out, and it was interesting, but I had a very hard time figuring out the actual. Facts and information that you were trying to present, because it, it wasn't a full map, nor was there any, you know, number of parcels. So for a percentage, there's usually a number of yeses divided by the number of parcels included, and that would be a very simple math problem to figure out the percentages. So if we're pretty darn close and you have that information, we would love to hear that information.
Township was a variable, so I didn't bother to determine those numbers until we had that conversation.
Okay, so it's pretty darn close with township or not with township? Because, okay, so we're not close at all without the township.
For option B, if my math is correct.
Okay, so you did do the math.
I mean, it's just a guesstimate based on the numbers that we have presented.
Okay, great. Thank you. And how long have you been talking to the Gaffney family about the development downtown?
How long have I been talking to the Gaffney family about the development downtown?
Correct.
I can't say that I have a specific timeframe as to how long I've been speaking to them.
Was it before or after they purchased the property?
It was before.
So you knew about their interest in purchasing the property before they purchased the property?
No, they're residents too, so we have other conversations.
Okay, so did you have knowledge of them wanting to purchase this property and wanting to develop the property and bring water downtown? Prior to them purchasing the property in March?
I have knowledge and heard rumors. Just like everyone else has heard rumors. I know a lot of business owners that are over there, so rumors happen.
Okay, did you have any direct conversation with anyone in that family with regards to that?
With Mr. Gaffney, yes.
Okay. And was that conversation in relation to potentially purchasing property? He did not own and developing that? And you, and bringing water downtown?
I honestly don't remember. It was not about water at all.
Okay.
We did have conversation. I can't recall if it was about purchasing property. I know he had expressed an interest in bettering our community. What that looked like to him. I, I don't remember timeframe. I've been talking to him for, like I said, before we purchased the property, so.
Okay, I'm just really, you know, there's a lot of things online that I have been very concerned about, the antics, some of the very unprofessional behavior. And it has been concerning to me, so I have been requesting and reviewing some information, and I am concerned and feel that. Uh. If there's further water conversation, I think that it should be somebody else on the board that continues the conversation. I think that you have presented a conflict of interest in many ways, and. I'm very, I'm really trying to figure out, you know, why you're advocating for a very small minority of individuals that. You know, even in the survey, didn't get to the majority. So I'm very, just, I'm just trying to understand why so much time is being spent towards. Something that the majority has not been in favor of.
Um, I, I don't agree with you that the majority has not been in favor of it. We saw the survey results from the comprehensive plan audit. The people wanted to see water downtown by a majority. I've been working on water since 2017. It was one of my campaign promises in 2017, 2019, was that I wanted to see water infrastructure in town center, and I was elected on that. Um, so this is not new to me. And, and I've been always doing my due diligence, and I think that's what it is. I don't think there's a conflict at all.
So in the comprehensive plan of 2015, it actually explicitly states that they did not want, want water or development in downtown. They actually wanted that up on 130th closer to Brunswick, because that's where that area is. And that was where the, that is where most people wanted the development. And yes, we did send that survey out, and 51 supported, you know, bringing the water in. However, the people that are going to be affected is a very small. Portion of our residents, and you sent that letter out to those individuals, and nobody wanted it. You didn't even get to 50% or very close to it without any, uh, of those numbers. So I'm very confused.
I, I, I think we, we ended the conversation about water tonight.
Okay, so there's no more campaigning for water on your behalf, or are we going to continue to see these online antics from you? I'm just curious.
Online antics is a little stretch. I, I speak fact and people, they want to read and help perceive how they want to perceive, and that's the way it will always be. Um, I'm always going to fight for the majority. We saw by a comprehensive plan audit survey last year, just last year, not 2015, but last year. That the majority wanted to see water infrastructure in town center.
But the people that would actually have to pay for it didn't want it, and we're only running a very small line. And so you continue to fight, like today you came to the table to try to get more votes for a project that didn't even get, what, what was it, 20 to 30%? And you wanted to get additional votes to support, like you're saying, your campaign.
I know that's what you called it.
Uh, you just said you've been running on water, and that is your campaign platform.
Promise back in 2019.
Right, and it continues to be today, a campaign.
I've had people from downtown center who are presidential, that people as well as business owners, express interest in water to me.
Okay.
I know that they have expressed it to others. I know that the survey results came back positively in favor of water infrastructure in town center last year. And I know that when these letters went out, I've had at least three people that I've spoken to have expressed concern that they didn't respond. And I mentioned to them here publicly as to why they didn't respond, and they wanted an opportunity. So it's my job to ask the questions, to do my due diligence. This board has agreed not to move forward, so the conversation is over.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I, just, just to clarify, um. You are saying that you speak for what the majority wants. And it was 55% wanted water in the center of town. But.
57, 57.
But 67, I believe, wanted a green space levy.
Which is why I brought it to this table.
Right, but you didn't care about that, because you brought it to the table, and I said, okay, let's, let's come up with a committee. And you said, I don't care one way or the other for it. So. But that's not working on behalf of the majority, that overwhelming. F is what I would consider to be an overwhelming majority, 67%. That was not worth fighting for, but 57%. For water, that was. 57% of the township said, yes, I am in favor of running water, but it was a very open-ended question. It wasn't, well, I gotta pay for it, it's going to come out of my taxes, that small group of people will benefit from this water. That was not mentioned in the survey. The green space levy is just that, it's a levy. So people know if I'm voting yes, 67% of the population, the people who filled out the survey are saying, yes. 67% are saying I am in favor of that, so. I just, I, I'm, I'm a little bit confused how you are saying you do the majority, you speak, you are on behalf of the majority.
Absolutely, I am, and that's why the green space levy file folder was sitting on my desk, and I was reading through it, and I was going through all of the information. And I brought it to this board and asked the board if they would support it. The last conversation we had was that we were going to table it. And no, I don't have a position for water, and I don't have a position for green space levy. I'm just doing my due diligence. That's how a public official should be, and it makes me sad that I feel constantly attacked here for doing just that. I'm just doing my job. And so when we last had a conversation about the green space levy, we said we were going to table it. And so when we last had a conversation about the green space levy, we said we were going to table it and come back to it. And that's what I anticipate doing. I mean, a lot, a lot of it makes me sad. Lots of it.
Good evening. Cindy Engelmann, Ridge Road. Um, I noticed yesterday afternoon, um, that, um, on your trustee campaign page, trustee Augustine, that you posted a video indicating that you were going to be uh, running for office again. But then early this morning, you had pulled that post and I was wondering if you could explain why uh, you retract, retracted that post for the public's benefit. Thank you.
Absolutely. I, I'm going to run again. Thank you, Cindy. Um, the reason that I pulled it, it was because there was an error in my messaging and that I said I was running, um, I just didn't like the language. It sounded like I was running in twenty twenty-four when I'm actually running for twenty twenty-four and in twenty twenty-three. So I wanted to change that language to make it clear for residents.
Anybody else?
Nikki Long, Parker Road. I, I guess I just want to sort of address the elephant in the room. So Melissa, I know you, you've talked about doing due diligence and you do a lot of it. I, I'm curious, what due diligence have you done to ensure that you can actually, um, vote on, uh, any of the myriad of water issues, you know, a TIF district or, um, you know, if, if this letter, the water letter, uh, came back actionable, I, I'm curious how you, who has told you that you would be in a position to be able to vote on it without it being a conflict of interest? Well, um, again, the elephant in the room is that you are in a personal relationship with someone who is a parcel owner downtown and would financially benefit from that. And because you're in a, uh, personal relationship with that person, you would also stand to financially benefit. So that is
I financially benefit from something when I don't have any financial connection to anybody in town center.
Well, it's not really clear to anyone that you don't have a financial. Okay.
By my due diligence, because my position hasn't changed since twenty seventeen, that's a very big variable. The second thing is that the person that you're speaking of, regardless of relationship, would have to pay the same amount as everyone else. We all have relationships with business owners. I've been in Foster's when trustee Ashley's been there and had a conversation and brought in beer and had, you know, done things like that. I, we all have relationships.
Yeah.
We've lived here for a long time. I've lived here for twenty years. I know that Jack and Monique have lived here for a long time as well. This is not new to us. So there's nothing that financially connects me to the person that you're mentioning and therefore there's no conflict of interest.
Okay, so even though there is
I think that you should really drop it because the water conversation just left the table.
Okay, so it's not going to be brought up again?
Conflict of interest is specific to the individual. They have to make an ethical decision on their own.
Okay, so who have you consulted then that told you that
I don't need to go any further than what I've done.
Okay, so you don't want to, say for the public's benefit, who gave you their, that professional opinion or non-professional opinion? Okay, and so, um, I will make the distinction that you're right, there are relationships all over the place. People are friends, they've been friends for years, twenty years, thirty years, they grew up together. The reason this is different is because it is a personal relationship, but it's also a romantic relationship. And usually, when, when relationships are romantic, there is money that is, you know, given back and forth or shared back and forth. That's my personal experience. I would say that's most of people's experience. I'm not saying that's what's happening, but I think that it creates a concern and that's why I'm bringing it up. But can you, that's sure.
Scratch to try to disqualify me as a trustee and it's not going to work.
I'm not trying to disqualify you, qualify you as a trustee. I, I'm just asking, I'm just asking who provided you with that guidance on okay, all right. That was all I had. Thank you.
Nothing else for the good of the order. I will move to adjourned seven forty-five P M.
I'm sorry. I understand people don't like some things that are going on, but that went too far. All right, each one of these people gives up their time, their energies for, for nothing. And they deserve to be treated with the respect you would give anyone else. Who anybody sees, what they do in their free time, is their business. Okay, if, if one of these people is not doing their job, then by all means, anybody can come up there and they can tell them, I don't like what you're doing and I have a problem with you. But again, the same thing happened with Mr. Schulte when he had passed away on the senior housing thing. And there's a lot of innuendo and there's a lot of things that just don't need to be said. This isn't how our township operates. All right, this is just a fair little fraction of sand in our sandbox that we play in. So folks, if you want to be productive, then come up with valid productive points that have fact attached to them and give these people the respect they deserve. You may not agree with them. You may not like their methods, but they deserve respect and to be treated with it. They stand up here and do a very difficult job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Martha. And to that point, I just want to say that, you know, the last time that trustee Ashley, you brought up the conflict of interest in March, it, it, it really did a number on my kids who were asked a lot of questions that they really shouldn't be. Well, it's unfortunate
I, I will, I will address that, Melissa, if we're going to do the victim dance.
It's not a victim.
I will, I will address that because you have mentioned multiple times. Every time you even think I have a conflict of interest, anytime you think I have a conflict of interest, you are the first person to point it out.
This is not township, this is not ours. Okay, let's, let's take it outside in the parking lot, okay?
Yeah, you would have to come up to them.
Yeah, I will. Take a brief comment.
Jacob Suter, um, twenty, twenty-year resident. Um, as you know, uh, I have some business, um, at the golf course in the community. And I think sometimes people don't quite understand when, when you get involved in projects and have things going on in the community. And I was a perfect example when we wanted to do some development, um, at the golf course. You know, I know so many people in the community, just like everybody else. I took it upon myself to talk to multiple trustees, multiple people in the community about the project that went on. So, so to be as naive to think that somebody might not have, might have a discussion is pretty silly. I mean, you know, we've been in good standing in the community for fifty-some years over at the golf course. And so I just took it on myself to come up and say, okay, here's what we're thinking about doing. Uh, if you have any questions, comments at this point in time, I'll take it into consideration. And then we went about our business. But the front people about somebody that approaches them or talks to somebody individually about what transpires is being extremely naive and, uh, and not understanding of what transpires throughout the community. So I just wanted to add my two cents and Martha very well commented about what transpires around here so much when people are just trying to do their job, so.
So to Mr. Suter's comment, John Kailis, Ridge Road. Um, I, I guess it does boil down to transparency. When it seems like, whether it's the water issue or other issues, that people are only coming to talk to one trustee about it or, or only never showing up to the meetings essentially, they showed up to one meeting. The other side of the story is never there, so it doesn't seem, we don't get a chance to see the transparency. We don't get a chance to talk to the three residents that, that, that didn't get a chance to answer the survey. And, and they want to answer the survey, right? So we didn't get a chance to talk. We'd love to see them. I don't know. I, I know it gets kind of temperamental in here, but I think that we see one side of the story in here. And the transparency is, is when, when we, we have to like use our imagination to come up with like what else is being done on the side and all we hear is stories about these conversations. We never get to hear the people speak from their heart because I hear a bunch of people speaking from their heart, myself included, all the time. The passion isn't there on the other side. It's just not. And, and all we get is some narrated version of, of what happens on the side that we never, it, it, these people might not exist. We just want to see them. So that's where i- if you, if you want to cut the crap, I guess, is, is, is everybody's got to believe what they hear and believe what they see. That's all. That's it.
I think that I've been a leader in this community for the twenty years that I've lived here. I was PTO president, I was vice president. Even after I left Hinkley Elementary School, after I set up Facebook pages for every school in Highland School District, I got phone calls about silly things. Hey, do you know where the lights are for the mother-daughter or the father-daughter dance? I'm a point person. I have been a point person. People come to me, they will always come to me, whether I'm in this position or not. And that's just the way it is. And I know that the other trustees have conversations as well. So the, you know, that's, that's just how it is when you're a trustee and you're a leader in a community, you will be a point person. Conversation happens. And I can't document every conversation I have and I don't need you.
That's okay. I, I get it. Okay, but it's just like, you know, I hear everybody say that that, that all the hostility and stuff, and I don't see anyone trying to stop. I really don't. I just see, just, it's perpetuating and it's picking up more steam. And this is really easy if we can get the people that, again, the people are always here. The, the, the group that sits in the back of the room, like they always agree and there is never this other side. They never show up. There's five people on Zoom right now. They're, they're never here for any of this stuff. So, so that is, those people can call you and they can do everything. But I've literally been here, I don't know how many times, and Jack and Monique are clueless as to who these people are. They how many of these emails do you guys get when, when Melissa is talking about these conversations? Do you ever see any of these emails?
I actually, I, I do not quote anyone I speak to if there's not a record of it. If I have a conversation with someone, if it's a conversation, if it's a conversation in public, I send a follow-up and I always ask them, do you want me to send an email? Because I like there being record of the conversation. So when I'm quoting someone, when I'm giving you numbers of people I've spoken to, there's documentation that there was a conversation. I'm not saying that that's the only way to do it and I'm sure there's several different ways to do it, but that is my best practice so that there is record of conversation.
At the end of the day, you're not required to do that. You have to decide whether, you know, you trust the individual or not.
Sure.
At the end of the day.
It adds a layer of transparency.
Transparency, right. And, and, and I guess to, to the comment from the audience about people being clueless. Clueless is not answer, asking the questions. Clueless is just accepting what someone tells you. Okay? So, so I would say it's actually the opposite of being clueless, is trying to get to the facts and trying to make things transparent. So that's what I have to say to them.
So if I didn't mention a comment that I heard from someone, is that not being transparent?
If you didn't mention
You need to be If someone comes up to me and says, hey, Melissa, I was on my honeymoon, I didn't get, I didn't get the letter in time, I couldn't submit it.
It's, it's
So is it not transparent if I don't say it?
I'm not saying that the stuff can't happen. It just seems to happen like every time, every time that we want more answers. Every time that there's an opinion that is, that is contrary to someone that stands at this podium, there's always some ghost, there's always some phantom that has this opinion that never shows up. They're compelled to talk to you. They really need it. There's always some story about how badly they need it, but they're never here to show their faces. That's all. I mean, one out of, I don't know, five times to see that person here would earn more credibility, sure. But when all we hear is just whispers in the wind about who these people are and every time it benefits, you know, whatever it is that you're at the table with, then yeah, we, we become a little suspect about it. Yeah.
My credibility is based on the fact that I am being as transparent as can be and standing here and giving conversations that I've had personally, publicly, then you know what? Judge me on that. Because I will always speak for every single person that I talk to, because that's my ability. I ask them to email me as a follow-up. I don't always get an email follow-up. People are busy.
Did you ever ask them to come here?
Absolutely.
And how come they never come?
I can't speak for why they're not here. That's
How come they never watch on Zoom?
I'm sure that there, there are people that I've talked to many times that say they can't make it, but watch it on YouTube. There's convenience in that.
Sure. I, I, I think it would, it would go a lot further, okay? It would go a lot further if, if these people showed up once in a while.
I think we need to understand what a record is in the state of Ohio. And if it's not written down, and if it's not in an email format, a form of communication or a text message or any type of formal record, then I don't need to produce a record.
But, but when we're talking about transparency and, and I guess just the, the overall feel of this room, the overall feel of the township, it doesn't have to, everything doesn't have to be nailed down. Everything doesn't have to be by the book. It can be, uh, community. I don't know. It could be community. It could be people trading barbs back and forth, but but, but here to discuss it, like this stuff gets discussed, I don't know, here, and that's it. I, I never see any other contrary opinions. I just don't, except, you know, a little bit of that, whatever that is. Comments from the peanut gallery. I, I would just like to see, I don't know, a, a better dialogue. That's what I would like to see.
Thank you, John. I'll move to adjourned seven fifty-six P M.
Second.
Second in all the favor.
Hi.